All right. Good evening, everybody. For the record, it's 5:15 PM on March 24th, 2022. Again, 5:15 PM, City Council is out of executive session. I've called the meeting to order. We always start with the pledge of the flag. So, Councilmember Roger Nostian, you want to lead us in the pledge?
Yeah. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Roger Nostian. First item at our agenda tonight are the consent items, which includes approval of the agenda, vouchers, and minutes from the previous meetings, and to accept the work performed by a couple of contractors on some jobs inside the city limits of the city of Wenatchee. So I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion that we adopt the consent items consisting of this evening's agenda, vouchers, minutes from previous meetings, also to accept the work performed by Alpha Laval Inc. on the wastewater treatment plant belt filter press rebuild. Boy, say that fast a couple times. Project number 2108, and further authorize the mayor to sign the final contract voucher certification on behalf of the city of Wenatchee, including the city council to accept the work performed by the contractor RW Scott Construction, Inc. on city project 2005-P1-Emerson Avenue ADA ramps, and authorize the mayor to sign the final contract voucher.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Kula. Second by Councilmember Huffaker to approve this evening's agenda, vouchers, and the minutes from our previous meetings to accept the work performed by Alpha Laval, Inc. on the wastewater treatment plant belt filter press rebuild, project number 2108, and further authorize the mayor to sign the final contract voucher certification on behalf of the city of Wenatchee, and for the council to accept the work performed by the contractor RW Scott Construction, Inc. on city project number 2005-P1 Emerson Avenue ADA ramps, and authorize the mayor to sign the final contract voucher. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have one presentation tonight regarding our apple blossom royalty. So I will read this proclamation into the record, and then we'll have the royalty come on up. So, whereas the Washington State Apple Blossom Festival has been a Wenatchee community tradition since 1920, and whereas the Washington State Apple Blossom Festival is a premier, family-oriented festival that showcases our people, community, heritage, and fruit industry, and whereas the Washington State Apple Blossom Festival royalty helped promote this ongoing community celebration and act as ambassadors of our community at local, state, and international celebrations, and whereas Ryan Salsito has been selected as the 2020 Festival Queen, with Presley Nelson and Ainsley Shearer selected as the 2022 Festival Princesses. Now therefore, I Frank Coontz, on behalf of the Wenatchee City Council, do hereby formally congratulate and bestow our appreciation to the 2022 Washington State Apple Blossom Festival Queen, Ryan Salsito, and princesses Presley Nelson and Ainsley Shearer. In witness whereof, I have hereby set my hand and cause the great seal of the city of Wenatchee to be fixed on this 24th day of March, 2022. Frank Coontz, Mayor. Come on up, ladies, Kathy and everybody. Hello. How are you? Nice to see you again.
Thank you so much.
Fancy apples. Yeah.
Thank you so much.
We have a microphone for them. You guys want to say something?
Sure, absolutely. Hi. Like you said before, I'm Ryan Salsito. It's so nice to meet all of you. I would like to say thank you so much for all that you all do for our community. You guys truly make this place a wonderful place to call home. And I'm so privileged and blessed to be here with you all today and just to meet all of you. And I just, again, want to say thank you so much for all that you do and for the time that you give up from your families and just everything that you do for us. Thank you.
In the past month alone, we have received so much support from our community, and that comes from people like you, other clubs around our community. And we just want to say again, thank you. I mean, what you do for us and for the rest of Wenatchee is amazing and incredible. So thank you.
All three of us have grown up in Wenatchee. And we talk about this a lot at the elementary schools that we go to, how even if you grow up here, there's so many sides of Wenatchee that you don't really get to see just living here. And we've gotten to see what our community does with people who are at risk, what our community does when we have snowstorms. Just all sorts of great stuff. And it's been really fascinating to learn about all the different perspectives. So thank you.
I guarantee you, you won't find a hotter place in the city of Wenatchee today to be here. Because woo, baby, yeah. So I thank you guys for being here. Thanks, ladies, for chauffeuring them around, and look forward to seeing you in a few short weeks, it sounds like, like nine, four weeks, three, five weeks? Very, very soon. So thank you very much. Congratulations and good luck. Oh, picture, hold on.
You a drink?
What do you want me to? All right. Thanks, everybody. You guys don't have to say. Oh, do you guys have a song?
Yeah.
I shouldn't have asked that. So, all right. All yours.
It's time for apples. They're about to bloom. We're turning heads. Boom. Need our valley to show up. And celebrate who we are is enough. Everyone else in our valley sees it. So here's a cheers to you. City Council, you light up Wenatchee like no one else. The way that you support us gets us overwhelmed. But when we all come together, ain't hard to yell and celebrate. Oh, oh, let's celebrate our roots. If only apple blossom was all year round, then we'd see each other in greater earnest. So let's all get together and give a shout. Celebrate, oh, oh, let's celebrate our roots. So come on. Food fair we come. Food prove I'm right. Let's get into the funnel cake. Some shushka berries or pancake breakfast. And turn around like they started up the carnival. Na 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 na, na 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 na. Na 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 na, na na. So come on.
Thanks, ladies. And you don't have to stay in the sauna any longer than you have to. So feel free to go. All right. Thanks, guys.
Thanks for coming.
Always a fun tradition. All right. Citizen comment. This would be a time if any member of the audience would like to address the city council on any item, feel free to come up, give us your name, address. Give you three minutes or so. Anybody wish to address the city council this evening?
Can it be done by phone?
Yes, it can be done by phone. Who's on the line, please?
Okay. My name is Richard Taylor. I'm a Wenatchee resident. And I am hoping to find out, address you directly, but then ask that you get more information to help me out. We have, I think, increasingly approached the point, and I think maybe even passed the point, that the community is being disturbed badly with noise pollution. The Department of Ecology has a definition for it. It's a form of pollution. The state, the county, the city have laws about it, code about it. But apparently, unless you can find out for me whether there is any enforcement happening, there is no enforcement happening. What I'm referring to, of course, is the intentional modification of exhaust exhaust on vehicles in order to make them as noisy as possible, particularly when accelerating dramatically from a stop sign or a traffic light. I live on First Street, and I'm able to follow a particular vehicle all the way up, for example, Fifth Street, heading west, all the way heading south on Western, all the way to maybe Washington or even farther, and then all the way back down to Miller. I think it's a serious problem. If it's unenforceable, then I'm not so sure why four entities, two state, one county, and one city are making it unlawful. There are even ways to measure what constitutes a violation in terms of decibels. It can be done pretty easily with low technology. I know there are many other important things the police need to be doing. So the question is, if this is the law, how can it be enforced? What can I do? Do I go out with a microphone and some way to measure decibels? Do I file some kind of civil complaint against a particular individual? I'm not a vigilante. I don't want to do any of that. And so I want to bring it up to you folks so that you can whisper in the ears of some people to try to help get some answers. There was even one person on Western who put up a sign that said, please don't do this, which I thought was actually kind of pitiful. It's a serious issue because it disturbs people. The one I followed, one time I followed one, not following, but heard the noise and followed it. It was about 1:00 in the morning on a weekday. Thank you. That's all I have. I just wanted to point that out to you directly so that you could put on your thinking caps. Thanks.
All right. Thanks, Richard. Appreciate it. Anybody else wish to address the city council on something that's not on today's agenda or an agenda item? Seeing no other takers. We will move into our agenda items today, which includes, the first up is an RCO grant, perhaps application. Mr. Erickson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Dave Erickson, Parks and Recreation Director for the city. So this evening, we're requesting approval of Resolution 2022-09, which would authorize us to apply for a state grant for our Big Horn Ridge Acquisition Project. We've been pretty lucky in the past getting some grants from the state. This is the same grant program that we've, for the most part, have applied for previously. The grant application process is competitive and highly competitive, and takes about a year to complete. So if we get this authorization, we would be applying for the grant through the rest of this year. If we're successful, we would get a grant contract next year. And then, from there, would handle the acquisition probably a year or two after that. So the very first steps in a very long process. With that, I can try to answer any questions you might have.
So the process would be, we apply for the grant. Maybe this property gets acquired, and the state basically reimburses through us, and then we end up entitled.
Right. Yeah, we're partnering with the land trust on this project, just like we did with all the other foothills properties.
Everything that we've done that way, it's the same process.
Yep, exactly.
Any questions for Mr. Erickson? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I would like to make a motion for the city council to approve Resolution 2022-09, authorizing staff to prepare, submit a Recreation Conservation Office, Washington Wildlife and Recreation Program Grant, application for Big Horn Ridge Acquisition Project. Ooh, stumbled.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hornby. Second by Councilmember Roger Nostian to adopt Resolution 2022-09, authorizing staff to prepare and submit a Recreation Conservation Office, Washington Wildlife and Recreation Program Grant, application for the Big Horn Ridge Acquisition Project. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Chief Crown, Public Utility District Agreement.
Thank you, Mayor, city council members. Item before you is actually just an amendment to an existing service contract with the Chalene County Public Utility District. It merely reflects the overtime hourly rate for our officers to provide services to the PUD. Most times, those services are bicycle patrols, parking enforcement, special events, and other situations where they may need additional law enforcement. Historically, through the COVID period, we weren't working with the PUD and didn't have any expenditures for the last two years. But prior to that, we've used them for the Fourth of July celebration, a couple other events that went on down there. And it is mostly our bicycle program that the PUD helps us fund those bicycles and getting them serviced, and sometimes the equipment that is associated with that. Sometimes it's uniform items. But this is a relatively simple addition. The total contract is not to exceed $73,191.31. So requesting that Mayor Council approve and authorize signature.
So we adopt this every year. The only thing that changes is the hourly rate as you build it up based on uniting contracts and employee benefits, and as you sort of build up that rate.
That is correct. Makes a lot of work for everybody, but.
Yeah. All right. Any questions for chief? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I move for city council to authorize the mayor to sign interlocal agreements with Washington.
Oops, wrong one.
I apologize. I move for city council to approve and authorize the mayor's signature for Amendment Number 13 to Service Agreement SA Number 10-182, which reflects the chargeable overtime rates for police officers.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Harold. Second by Councilmember Cuevas to approve and authorize the mayor's signature for Amendment Number 13 to the Service Agreement SA Number 10-182, which reflects the chargeable overtime rates for police officers. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any thoughts on the souped-up Subarus driving through town?
Yeah, one of the, yeah, one of the most, I was just talking to the city attorney about it. One of the most difficult things about it is the RCW, the revised code of Washington statute, that there has been a number of challenges to the law, and they've, law enforcement has lost in those because in order to make the traffic stop, you have to have reasonable suspicion to believe that the exhaust is not part of the original manufacturer, and also that the sale of the vehicle did not come with that. So you have to have at least some sort of knowledge that the individual modified their own vehicle. So it creates a little bit of a loophole. Some possible suggestions might be to adopt a city ordinance that goes beyond the RCW, but there may be some legal considerations for that as well.
Just clarification on that. So if they're violating our noise ordinance by being too loud, there's nothing we can do now just because they might not have made the changes themselves?
It's proximity, too. I mean, we have to literally be able to, with our own statute or ordinance, have to have the 50 feet, the other factors that are associated with our current noise ordinance, and being inside of a vehicle may be very difficult to do that. You'd have to have very directed spotter-chaser type scenarios in order to enforce our city ordinance.
Chief, I think Keith was referring to, I buy a vehicle and somebody already modified it. I'm okay?
We have to know. That's the knowledge that we have to know on.
You have to know that I didn't do it, but it could have been modified before I got it.
But you.
Is that what you were referring? But yeah, but I guess my point with that is you're in possession of something that's making excessive noise that's disturbing the peace. You know, if I buy a dog from somebody else and it barks too loud, it's still my dog, and he's barking too loud. But that's the law.
The dilemma that the chief's talking about.
Yeah.
The handcuff, if you will.
Yeah.
Bad laws make bad enforcement capabilities.
All right. Thanks, chief.
Yeah.
All right. Insurance with WCIA, Mr. Posenjack.
Good evening, Mayor and council. This evening, I'm here to request that the council authorize the mayor to sign a couple interlocal agreements with the Washington City's insurance authority to ensure, for the city of Wenatchee, we don't just purchase our liability and property insurance from a regular insurance carrier. We join a risk pool with multiple other city jurisdictions. And we have, for many years, we've been with AWC, RMSA, their Risk Management Service. And over the last couple of years, we've become aware that our population and size of the city of Wenatchee would fit much better with the WCIA, the Washington City's Insurance Authority. And there have been other staffing transitions between RMSA and WCIA that have, that basically staff have come and are asking for us to be able to switch. We feel that WCIA will be able to provide a service that is tailored a bit more to a city of our size. I think in your agenda packet, you can see a couple charts that we've provided that shows where Wenatchee stands population-wise in RMSA versus WCIA. With RMSA, we're kind of the big fish in a little pond. And with WCIA, we are more of a medium fish and swimming with other similar-sized fish. So we have notified RMSA back in December that we were looking at other options, and we've had other discussions with WCIA. And their executive committee, they met and approved that we could join with that risk pool. And at this point now, we just have to sign a couple, a membership agreement and a pre-membership agreement. There was an interlocal that was created back in 1991 between several cities. And now we have to, one, sign an amendment to allow us to join onto that interlocal agreement. And then we also have a pre-membership agreement that allows us to take advantage of WCIA's training and their pre-litigation services so that we can call for advice on certain things that are popping up. And so we have those services available to us prior to January 1st of 2023. So there's two different agreements in here. And besides just, besides just the ability for us to be in a pool that has more like-sized cities in it, besides that, in our discussions with WCIA, it looks like we will probably end up saving about $300,000 a year by making that switch. We're currently paying a little over $1.1 million per year for our premiums, and there should be a little over $800,000 a year for our premiums, at least in the coming year.
Yeah, so we mentioned this to you, I don't know, a month or a half ago, that we were looking at this, and it was pretty clear that you guys needed final approval to make it happen. And from staff's perspective, we think this is the right move. Most all, all the department heads we met last all agreed that, they all get training through WCIA. You know, this is all a big package that affects every department in our city in terms of where they get their training from. And then Brad's staff, in particular, that they're dealing one-on-one on case-by-case basis for all of the different claims that come. And so Miranda, in particularly, who runs that for Brad's department, is very clearly would like us to switch to WCIA. And I think if you look at the scattergram that Brad provided, you know, when we go to training, we're getting training based on, if you're a 5,000 or 6,000-person sitting, we're not necessarily getting training like we're a 35,000-person sitting. That's different training, different things going on. And so I think for all of those things, cost, we think better training, and perhaps better service. We feel like this is the right move for the city. And we've been with RMSA for a long time, so.
And it has, and it has been a good, it's been a great relationship over the years. It's just at some point, you get large enough and realize that it's, there's another agency that might be better suited for you.
Yep.
In reading this, I think I understand this correctly, that all entities have someone that's on the board of directors and an alternate appointed.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I believe that every.
One representative of each member city.
Yeah, is required to go.
On the board. How many member cities are there? I'd like to see that board room because your scatter chart has quite a few dots on it.
Better yet, try and get a decision out of them.
Yeah, and I don't know if there's representation from every city on. Yeah, it does sound like there's representation from every city.
This is from the original interlocal, so there may be some other.
Yep. Yeah, I don't, I don't, yeah, I don't know the answer to that. I know they do have requirements that a representative from the city does come to at least three, or at least three training events or meetings per year. So there are a couple requirements of our involvement.
For us to stay with WCIA, we have to have a certain number of training amongst staff members. And so there's lots to do just to become a member there and to maintain a membership and standing. All right. Any other questions for Brad? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
No, I'd like to make a motion for city council to authorize the mayor to sign interlocal agreements with the Washington City's Insurance Authority for membership and pre-membership in the WCIA insurance pool.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Roger Nostian. Second by Councilmember Hornby to authorize the mayor to sign interlocal agreements with the Washington City's Insurance Authority for membership and pre-membership in the WCIA insurance pool. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Brad.
Thank you.
Charlotte. Back to work on Saddle Rock, environmental remediation.
Yes, so this is for Phase Two, the final phase of Saddle Rock. Back in the fall, we finished what we thought was final design and realized we had a surplus in the budget, which is one of those moments that hasn't happened very often in my career. But so then we went to the land trust, and they said, actually, there's some more work we'd like to add that would add long-term value to the trail and with long-term sustainability. So we sent our engineers back to do that. So then they came back and said, well, we can do all this work, and it's great, but it's a little bit over the budget now. So the land trust has graciously agreed to chip in some money. So the end game of this is that we're fine. The city isn't going to have to pay any more money. But my schedule this summer is incredibly busy. I have three construction projects plus this one. And so when we initially had found the surplus, we thought this was a great opportunity for geoengineers, who's been our design engineer, to do the construction management of this project. They have a ton of experience doing it, and we've been really happy working with them. So this is me humbly requesting to you to save my summer and allow the mayor to sign an extension. and allow the mayor to sign an extension with Geoengineers contract so that they can do the construction management and I can work on the other three construction projects I'll have this summer. Any questions?
No questions for me. She came to finance committee today and we also approved the contract. And then if there's going to be a little bit of overage at some point, that the land trust is going to pay for some of that, so.
Yep, we're going to bid next Tuesday. So in about a month, we'll have a really good idea of where the construction is going to finally land.
Okay. And Steve Smith has figured out how to get us access to that land? We got access to the land yet?
We're working on it.
All right. All right, any questions for Charlotte? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for the city council to authorize the mayor to sign Amendment Number Two to the Professional Services Agreement with Geoengineers, Inc. for Phase Two interim remedial action at Saddle Rock National Area for Construction Management in the amount of $168,208.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Huffaker, seconded by Councilmember Poyer, to authorize the mayor to sign Amendment Number Two to the Professional Services Agreement with Geoengineers, Inc. for Phase Two interim remedial action at Saddle Rock National Area for Construction Management in the amount of $168,208 so Charlotte can have a summer. I'm not sure that was officially part of it. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Charlotte.
Thank you so much.
Good luck. Mr. Parsons. Fourth step in two small annexations.
Deputy mayor and council, I'm here to talk about two annexations that are moving forward, ready to go to public hearing. And I'll just probably a little bit of background so you have a sense of what is. Here we go. There we go. Oh, I closed it. There we go. Talk about, a little bit, a sense of what's going, coming next because that affects what you're setting the hearing for. So first, I'll just remind everyone where we're talking about. Fair Properties LLC annexation is at the corner of McKittrick and Western. The, what's formerly known as the Western Mini Storage is at the corner. Now it's called Wenatchee Express Storage. So the last time you saw it was December 9th. And since then, we've circulated a petition and gotten it certified as sufficient. In terms of what's happening next, we have a resolution before you to set the public hearing as for April 14th. And the unique thing about this is that it won't, you won't be passing an ordinance that night. For the last iteration of the process, the last annexations we did in the last year, that would have been how it happened. But now there's a Schlang County Boundary Review Board. And so that you'll be, after, on April 14th, be entertaining a resolution that would indicate your intent to annex. And then we would send a notice of intent to the Boundary Review Board. They would go through their process. And then assuming that they approve it, then it would come back to you for an ordinance. So a little bit, a couple extra steps in the process. I just want to kind of make that clear.
So this will set the public hearing.
Yes.
And then once we set the public hearing, and this is when we adopt whatever you ask us to adopt, then off it goes to the Boundary Review Board. When it comes back, and that's not a public hearing then, when it comes back.
Yes, we've already done the required public hearing.
So that could just go on a consent agenda item because we've seen it 17 times by then.
Right, yeah, give an ordinance and yeah, you can pass it, yes.
Just don't know how many times we have to see it, right? So it's like.
Sure, there you go.
Once they're done, we can just consent item the darn thing and.
Yeah. Yeah, so. Basically, yeah, two resolutions before you. The other one is up in Sunny Slope, Melody Lane, off Melody Lane, four parcels, so.
Exact same process for them.
Same process.
Public hearing will be the 14th.
They're going to run it in parallel, yep.
Your Honor, since we need independent action on these, your honor, I'd make a motion for the council to pass Resolution Number 2022-08, fixing time of hearing on petition for annexation of an unincorporated area containing five parcels located northeast of the intersection of McKittrick Street and Northwestern Avenue, also known as the Fair Properties LLC annexation.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Kula, seconded by Councilmember Harold, to adopt Resolution 2022-08, fixing the time of hearing on petition for annexation of an unincorporated area containing five parcels located northeast of the intersection of McKittrick Street and Northwestern Avenue, also known as the Fair Properties LLC annexation. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And the next one? Same song, second verse, different land.
Yeah, the JAB Investors LLC annexation. Four parcels off of Melody Lane, between south of Peters Street and west of Hilltop Place. Again, yeah, running at the same, doing the same thing, same process. They'll be running on the same timeline. And so, yeah, there's a resolution before you to set that public hearing again for April 14th.
All right, any questions for Matt? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Your honor, I move for city council to pass Resolution Number 2022-10, fixing time of hearing on petition for annexation of an unincorporated area containing four parcels located north of Melody Lane and west of Hilltop Place, also known as the JAB Investors LLC annexation.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Harold, seconded by Councilmember Cuevas, to adopt Resolution 2022-10, fixing time of hearing on petition for annexation of an unincorporated area containing four parcels located north of Melody Lane and west of Hilltop Place, also known as the JAB Investors LLC annexation. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Matt. Appreciate it.
So Matt, Mr. Parsons, even after we have a hearing on the 14th of April on these, and then it gets filed with the Boundary Review Board, and then they have a certain period of time that they can determine its sufficiency. And then that starts another 45-day clock that they can.
Yes, the, so the Fair Properties.
Either act within or set their own public hearing.
That's, that's my understanding, yeah. The Fair Properties LLC annexation is above the $2 million. And so it will have to go through the 45-day period. I believe the JAB Investors, there's the option, the Boundary Review Board will have the option of skipping that if they so desire. But at any rate, that would be, yeah, they would go through that. I think they send it out to agencies per comment and then they, and they put it on agenda. And I think people can request, various parties can request the public hearing on it. And so I don't know if that, exactly if that draws it out farther. But otherwise, yeah, it could be administrative item or a public hearing.
I guess it just strikes me that all this discussion that we hear all the time, about we've got to streamline permit processes, particularly coming from the entity up the hill. We've got to streamline this stuff. We've just added two to three months.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
To a process where people are asking to be included in the city limits.
Yeah.
It's, 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 it's an oxymoron.
And it's already one of the most complicated things we do. And you just added another layer of complication to it and timeframe, right? Yeah, you've heard me say this before. I can't think of anything we do that's more complicated than any sort of annexation.
Yeah. Thank you, Matt.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Matt. All right, mayor's report. I think out of the mayor's office, we've been working. Obviously, the Schlang County PUD has started their public process with respect to Confluence Parkway. I would encourage each and every one of you and your friends at home to go on the website and they've got a half a dozen questions yourself, fill them out. They're having their outreach next Thursday or Wednesday, next Wednesday. I will be at most of those events during that time period. So again, make sure your feelings are known and those of your friends and neighbors who want to see Confluence Parkway built. This is an important outreach and make sure their voices are heard. We're following that extremely closely. I did meet with the new executive director of the Chamber of Commerce, Steve Wilkinson, on Monday. Very nice gentleman. Look forward to him starting, I think, here at first part of April.
April 1st.
Yep, very enthusiastic. So Laura and I met with him and had a great conversation. And so wish him the best of luck. Laura and I were also at the Our Value, Our Future Action Plan released yesterday at lunch at PIBUS. So they've got their new action plan. I know the city's, Laura's actually the chairman of the board of Our Value, Our Future, so we do have our hands on a number of those sorts of projects. But you should get, Laura, can you get a copy of those for all the councilmembers? Put them in their, in their mail for them to read and sort of where we fit with all of that stuff. I'm going to go back and see what else is sort of going on in terms of. I think that's really all. Laura, you got other stuff to add? Sounds like the Apple Blossom.
Invalid selection.
Sounds like the Apple Blossom Festival has set their, wanting to use the DOT property for the carnival. And I think that our staff has looked at the plans and have agreed that that's a decent location for this year. So it looks like the carnival will be locating on the Wash Dot site that we currently own for this year. We are, will the snow be melted by then? The snow should be gone. We're putting together a parking plan. When they leave, they can only turn right. We're doing some stuff to sort of help. And they don't do the, they used to do the, either Thursday or Friday night, the ribbons. And, you know, they don't do that anymore, the bracelets. So the night of all of the traffic, you know, that we had before, isn't a thing anymore. So I think that eight acres will handle it just fine in terms of parking and place for the rides and all that. So it sounds like that's pretty much a done deal.
Yeah, and we'll get a map out. You know, I've asked Darcy and our team to get a map out so we can put it on social media and send it out to folks who will be, you know, it's a new site. We don't, it's such an open site that we don't want folks circulating, trying to find the parking or doing, you know, or running across the street. You know, we're trying to make it as safe as possible. So there will be designated parking. We're going to try to stripe it, have some parking attendants there to make it, again, as easy as possible to find it. So we'll get that out. But, yeah, you know, this is a temporary site while the carnival continues to search for a more permanent location. They're having some good discussions with other agencies.
Yeah. So this is temporary location, too. For last year, it was Lincoln Park. And today it's Wash Dot, and it won't be Wash Dot next year. So they are trying to find a more permanent location.
Other than that, the chamber banquet is next week. So we don't have city council. It'll be the banquet. I think our next meeting is not until April 14th.
Councilmembers, anything going on?
Just a couple things from the chamber. The port was there and they have now finished purchasing all the property needed to put in the new instrument landing system, which they believe will increase landings by as much as 60% in body weather.
Okay.
That's a good, good improvement. You already talked about Steve. And then Mayor Crawford actually came and presented her strategic plan for the city of Eastern Ashy.
Oh, good.
I thought it was well put together and well thought out. They did a good job.
Good. I know they're planning quite a bit of growth by annexation. She's done a nice job with their police department and so. Yes?
I know I sent this to you last week, but the Masala Festival, we will not be sending any representatives this year. And that could go on for the next several years. They just don't know because the pandemic and COVID is still raging over there. So they're only allowing 5,000 visitors into the country at any time. And that doesn't include tourists. That's people that are there for business or government business.
And the letter they sent didn't just say next year. I was hoping it was a misinterpretation on languages, that they said years.
Yeah.
I was hoping that they just meant year, not really years, but they said years like plural, like it might be a while.
And they were supposed to come here this October, but that hasn't been decided yet. So we don't know about that.
Jose, Mike, anything going on? Top, Travis?
The Schlang Douglas Health District received the secretary's award for public health services in Washington with handling the COVID, so it's something cool.
That's the good news that goes with the fact that they had 100,000 peoples.
We talked about that, too. I figure you guys could read about it.
Read about it in the newspaper, yeah. Councilmember Kulas?
The Link Transit Board put a pause to some service changes that were going to come into effect in July. And, you know, partially in response to some questions about how specific individuals would be impacted by the service changes and also a push for wanting more proximate stops to the Veterans Administration Clinic in Old Station. So those were put on, put on pause. And I was just noting some emails that the Link Transit staff has gone back and addressed the nagging issues that were brought up at our hearing and maybe running this again. So some routes are going to get more service, some are going to get cut.
Okay.
Some of it has to do with driver availability. Link, like everybody else, is having some issues of hiring and retraining employees. So that's underway. And then the museum, Wenatchee Valley Museum and Cultural Center is recruiting for a permanent executive director at this time. So those, that's in the hands of a recruiting firm and the announcements are out. So if anyone wants to do their night at the museum thing.
And I think, I don't know if I told you this last time, we did meet with Laurel and the other gal about, you know, the city's commitment to their remodel and redoing. And so we had some good conversations and we'll have to sort of see where that, where that sort of goes. It is our building and there are some of the improvements that are mechanical and electrical in nature, that roofs and windows and things that are probably our responsibility anyhow, that we've just sort of delayed putting money in. And so we need to have a conversation about what that looks like and timing and.
And if there is interest, the next board meeting is going to be in person, assuming they can find a large enough spot, with the architectural firm that's been hired to do the, what's this going to look like? That'll be the next board meeting in April, which was the third Tuesday in April someplace. So that's coming up. And lastly, the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee met. We reviewed a little bit of the destination marketing strategic plan, discussions on financial issues. And we'll meet again.
Okay. All right.
It was on the UCT, I do.
So we won't see you next week at the chamber banquet. And Tammy, you've got everyone signed up that wanted to go? Thank you for doing that. On a sad note, we do not know where the gavel is. Or it magically is not here anymore. So Tammy's ordering us another one.
You know what? I can bring you some because we, they get left at the convention center all the time. We've got dozens of them.
Oh, Tammy's going to bring one. And we got our new bill, our new offices coming up. So this will be the start of the next 120 years of the city with the next gavel.
I want one that squeaks on one side when he hits. Yeah.
So she gave me this one. So anyhow, that's it. We're adjourned.